On November 6th, I did present to the Board of Selectmen at the monthly meeting that they have where I come in and I share some updates. I did mention that we, our current budget, current year we're in, we've had some good news. We've experienced some changes in our, in our plan changes for our health insurance and we've brought our deficit of $147,000 in health insurance to a zero. So that's actually helped our overall deficit, which is really good news for this year and also projected for next year as well. So we're happy to present that. In looking at the budget also for this current year, we know that there was already $33,000 worth of ECS reductions to the town of Woodbridge once the state did adopt their budget. This past Friday, the governor did communicate additional ECS, what they call lapse reductions. As you know, the state budget that has been passed is already in a deficit state. So additional reductions have taken place for many towns, including ours, an additional $55,000. Again, that is the money that is reimbursed to the town, what's called ECS, educational cost sharing. And that's really news that's hot off the press. So it's just the latest, greatest, not the greatest, I guess, but it's the latest. The development of our 2018-19 budget for next year, we are working on this right now and it's, we're working on this within the confines of the overall 2% guideline. And we're also looking at the identified rising out of just your costs that we have. So we're looking at this, we're working at this very hard. We'll be bringing this budget to the Finance Subcommittee in December and to the full board as well. We are still exploring some shared resources of some type or another with AMITI and also looking at areas of facilities and technology, from cost savings areas and other areas that we may not have previously looked at, but we're looking at under every rock, as we're saying, we're turning them all over to make sure that we're looking at all possible areas. So that is in process. The board knows that we presented a capital budget to you folks a few months ago, or actually it was last month, actually, the capital budget needs. And we'll be making that formal presentation of our capital budget needs to the Board of Selectmen and Finance at their combined meeting on November 30th in the meeting room at the Town Hall. We're anticipating at 6 o'clock as a starting time, but we're still waiting. Mr. Polo, was it 6 o'clock or was it later?
Seven.
Seven. Okay. They're saving the best for last, us. Okay. 7 o'clock. I had a very enjoyable and distinct pleasure of attending the CAAB, CAPS convention this past weekend in Groton on November 17th and 18th. Many impressive keynote speakers. I also had an opportunity to go to some workshops on personalized learning, presentations that were made by districts that are not so far from us, Wallingford and Plainville, and so areas that we might be able to go visit them at some point and then perhaps to visit us, some of the things that we're doing. I know Megan will be explaining a little bit more about the convention a little bit later during her report, but it was, it was overall a very beneficial experience. Last week, on November 15th, I had the pleasure of escorting one of our teachers, Mrs. Giaquinto, across the stage of the Bushnell in Hartford. Neither of us were singing, by the way, or dancing, but I was escorting her for the Teacher of the Year ceremony that takes place every year at the Bushnell. It was a very fitting and a distinguished ceremony. It was conducted during American Education Week. Over 100 districts do have a Teacher of the Year program in the state and we're one of them and it's a distinct pleasure every year to do that. So congratulations to Mrs. Giaquinto on her honor this year as our Woodbridge 2018 Teacher of the Year. Our Beecher Road School Thanksgiving food drive has completed, has been completed in collaboration with Masaro Farm and it was a great, a great job by our students and our families. Extra food items were also donated to the Woodbridge Food Bank. I'd like to thank everybody in the school who has participated for helping out and making this a very successful food drive. Speaking of raising funds or raising items or whatever, Student Council has been doing a lot of work in our school and outside of our, outside of our school. They had a recent bake sale. They raised a record-breaking $815.63 in support of hurricane relief efforts. And so approximately 30 boxes of items were transported by the Woodbridge Police Department. And I've invited the Student Council members to the December 18th Board of Ed meeting so they can share some of their successes with all of us. So congratulations. And Mrs. Hegney is one of our Student Council leaders, so thank you, as for what you do with your fellow faculty members to support our students. We had two robotics teams win awards at Sheldon High School this past weekend and they will be moving on to the state championships on December 2nd. Our two teams, the Eagles, won the Core Values Award and the Hawks won the Science Project Award. So congratulations to those teams and you may be hearing a little more detail about those endeavors in the near future, but congratulations to all of them. We had a fabulous Veterans Day celebration inside the school this year due to the weather, but I think we found the secret of Veterans Day in having us as a close community inside in the south gym, maybe the way to make this the most beneficial kind of a, of an activity and a celebration. Mrs. Prisco will report about Veterans Day in a little bit, but it was, it was a wonderful, a wonderful, wonderful recognition of our veterans from our school family as well as outside the school family and many, 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 many comments from people who were there saying, "We really, really appreciated it." So that was great. There were some accolades and some congratulations going to you folks as Board of Education members. As you know, the Woodbridge Board was named a Level 1 CAAB Board Leadership Award winner. And Megan will also tell you a little bit about this at our, during her CAAB report, but congratulations to all of you folks on that and for putting the award packet together. Congratulations also goes to Mrs. Prisco on her Electronic Principals Newsletter, which was a CAAB Award winner under the category of Going Green. So congratulations on that as well. Many of you were at the truck or treat activity that was sponsored by our Woodbridge Volunteer Fire Department. I am in awe of what they do for our kids and for our town. And so just a thank you out loud to the many volunteers for their generous efforts and generous contributions to make that such a success. I think many of us already know that the ad hoc SRO Committee has done a lot of work this past fall and we had our last meeting on November 2nd and there was a fair number of parents there compared to some of the other forms that we had, had held. And so this was the last meeting for us to have an opportunity in a personalized manner to present the information of our activities and from the survey and to help everybody understand, have a question and answer time as well. We have posted this presentation on our website and we inform parents of that through the Principals Newsletter recently. Excuse me. Just some demographic information and updates. We've received our updated demographic study, which we have every year, which helps us in planning. It's a planning tool and to develop our future budget for next year and beyond. And as you're aware, our enrollment continues to rise. As when I wrote this, it was 836, but we're actually above 836, Mrs. Prisco, right? So this may give us some challenges as we move forward, so.
I think I'm sorry.
Oh, you didn't drink anything?
No, I just poured some coffee.
Some coffee, thanks. There'll be some information also provided by Mrs. Prisco about our Election Day Professional Development activities, which were really outstanding for our staff, so she'll talk about that in a little bit. I think our hollering hoop would probably have been reported by our PTO representative, but she's not here tonight. But again, the hoop was a great success as well, even though we did have a fire alarm go off in the very beginning. We were back into the building and had enjoyed a wonderful day and raised a lot of money. And thanks to everybody for their participation in donating items, helping to run events and to just overall support our students through this wonderful fundraiser. We've had a number of safety drills, which Mrs. Prisco will report about as well, just wanted to mention that. And just wanted to again mention that reminder that I'm sure the students in this room will be very sorry to hear this, that there's no school for students tomorrow. Are you sorry to hear that?
I'm not.
But there will be professional development for teachers and staff, so we'll be here. So you can sleep a little later, but we can't. And we wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. If some of you were there at the townwide Thanksgiving celebration, one of the local churches, you'll know that it was just a great community opportunity to gather together and for the town just to share, to be together and to just be very appreciative of who we are as a community and all we have to be thankful for. So that ends my report and I wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay. So any questions for Bob before we move to Gina? Is that where we're going first or what are we doing?
Um, you know, I think we're gonna go into the strategic presentation so we can have our, the future of our students during the course of that and then also let them go home if they want.
You can stay.
So we have a, we have a visual PowerPoint to show you tonight, so I don't know if you're able to see that. So I am, first of all, I again want to thank all of our guests tonight who will be part of our project-based learning section of this presentation. So thank you, parents, for being here tonight and supporting your children and your children have done a great job in this particular endeavor and we'll talk about that in a little bit. But I do want to say to the board and to all those in the audience that I'm really excited about this plan and where we are right now. As you might remember, if we kind of rewind the videotape, if you want to use old language, this plan was birthed out of my entry plan as I came to Woodbridge. I set an entry plan to get to know all the stakeholders in town, staff, parents, community members, students, to really understand what are the things we're proud of and what are the things we feel like we need to work on, to find the commonalities and to find out where should we be going in a, in a model of continuous improvement as we move forward and go to the next level here, making a great school even better. You might remember last year in October, I provided sort of a beginning, where are we going? Last January was a full-blown, here is our plan and here's where we are going to go. Last May, we did an update for you as to what has been accomplished so far. And now this will be the next update, update here that will help you understand what we've done since then. I do want to say though, that all of these different areas, all these different initiatives, it's all about what's good for kids. It's all about what makes learning more engaging, what makes our, our facility and our organization run more efficiently, and how do we prepare students for the future. And so that is really the blueprint for our continuous improvement as we're moving forward. I do also want to say, and I've said this before, everything that goes on in this school, there's a lot of work going on without this plan. Every day is a full day without this plan and without the initiatives. So what I'm saying is this is above and beyond and in addition to everything that already goes on in preparing lessons and teaching, it's initiatives that go in addition. So it's, it's a lot of work, a lot of great rewarding work. Some of these areas are more high-profile than others. You'll see there's been a lot of work in some areas and some don't need that because they're moving along at a different pace for different reasons. But it's all great and it's very exciting work. And I think the important thing to note is that the staff is very engaged in this and is very, very challenged in a good way about this in terms of how we're moving forward. I also want to thank the leadership team for presenting side-by-side with me tonight because they're gonna be taking some different slides and talking a little bit about areas that they are guiding. So just to kind of run the two here, this is our, just again, our mission, vision and our beliefs. And these were developed last year through a process which I'll talk about in a few moments, but that is what guides everything we do and who we are. And these are the five areas, the five goals that really sum up the efforts of this plan. And the first goal again is about rigorous academic and social standards and expectations. The second one about personalized learning. The third, professional learning for all staff. The fourth, the partnerships, the diversity, the aspects of community. And the fifth one, maximizing efficiencies of systems and resources. Our first goal really talks about the priorities of making sure we have a solid mission and vision that we all believe in, that we've all crafted together, and also to make sure we have a strategy and a plan and actually an implementation for curriculum development, which is really at the heart and soul of what gets taught in the classroom and how we bring high-quality work through that curriculum development for our kids. In terms of our mission and vision, you'll, if you walk around the school, if you go in the classroom, you'll have started to notice the new posters and, and the new mission and vision being obviously evident. We obviously brought a stakeholder committee together last spring. We worked on review and revision. We created and finalized a draft. We got input from parents and from staff. We took that information, we took that, those feedback portions and we, we made revisions. We brought that to you folks as a Board of Education last June and we appreciate the endorsement of the mission and vision that we brought to you. Since then, we've provided posters to staff and we've, we've put some, some large hung pictures in, in the hallways, at the entrance ways. Our next steps really are to take a look at our beautification committee and how they can help to actually make the vision and mission visible in the school. And to continue the idea that this should be a living and breathing area, that it's not something that we craft a couple of statements and we put them on the shelf and we say, "Okay, well, that's nice," and we just put it on a wall. But that they're living and breathing, that students talk about them. We've had students in classrooms draw pictures as to what the mission and vision really means to them. We've had some lessons developed in one of our grade levels where they were shared and all students were able to participate in activities. So our mission and vision is at the heart and soul of who we are and where we're going. And you'll see here, on the right is the poster that every classroom has hung in their room and there's the words in large print as to who we are, "A caring, creative community that models and inspires the joy of lifelong learning, diversity, unique qualities," and the vision as we move forward in the future. Another portion of what we're doing in terms of this area, this first goal, is in curriculum development. And our curriculum development is alive and well. We have been spending some time during the summer and also during this fall. We have, we've accomplished a lot in the area of math and we're continuing to work on that. And grade four is done, grade one has started, grades two, three, and five are in process right now. And we're looking at completing and really rounding this out to make sure that we have a complete K through six consistent curriculum for math. Science got started in the summer. Science, led by Karen Stebinger, our science coordinator, exceeded their expectation for the, the number of units that they were able to complete during the summer. And we're looking to try to finish that work off in some grade levels during the course of the school year and then move towards the future. Social studies is sometimes thought about as a forgotten sister, the forgotten stepchild. And social studies standards did come out in the last year or two and we're looking to try to move that forward now in grades five and six in the spring. Our second goal is all about personalized learning. And really it comes out in a couple of different areas. One is the school enrichment model that we're working on in a variety of ways, including clusters and curriculum compacting, looking at project-based learning as a way to bring personalized learning to the classroom and also the eventual unveiling of a capstone project for sixth grade. You'll start to think about this as you hear some of the parts of this now, that there's a lot of intersection between this area and our current TAG program. We're starting to meld things together, or at least that's the way it looks. And so it's somewhere down the road, in order to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts, we need to talk about how are we gonna play these things out as these initiatives gain momentum and they go into other grade levels? What does that mean for the eventual TAG program? How does that play out in terms of enrichment for a few versus enrichment for all? So just those things to keep in mind as we move forward. I'm gonna invite up at this time, Mrs. Prisco, and I know Mrs. Hegney's gonna follow suit as well, we're gonna talk a little bit about project-based learning.
Thank you. So you can tell from, from what you have in front of you where we were and kind of where we're headed. Recently, our fifth grade team had an opportunity to meet with the sixth grade team. So I'm kind of blending a little bit about project-based learning and capstone because last year at this time, the fifth grade team was in the same position the sixth grade team is. So there was time spent, kind of, I'm gonna say hashing this out, what would this look like? What do we think this is going to look like? So then there was some time in the summer doing some more planning. And then the beginning of this school year and meeting with myself and even Mr. Gilbert as to develop the idea of Genius Hour to get us started on these foundational skills for research. And so where are we right now? Open house, all parents heard what Genius Hour was going to be, what it was going to look like, maybe sound like. And now the students have all developed a driving question and they are active in their research. The teachers have shifted. So recently, they met with Mr. Gilbert and myself and from what they thought this might develop into, to the life that it has taken as the students have really gotten into deciding what they wanted to learn about. And now we're talking about, well, how are we going to share this information out to the grade or fifth grade community or maybe one of the other grade levels? So we're, we're talking about that right now. But one of the things that I think is important is through this evolution in talking with Mr. Gilbert and myself, we're finding what is working for students. So we've given the fifth grade teachers a little bit of freedoms to kind of take a step back, evaluate if this is really working and students are engaged and they want to learn about this interest that they have. And many of our students started off with one question and during their research, they shifted. So I'm not going to take any more of the time and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hegney and the students and tell you best what they're looking about. So I have five students, three from Mrs. McCollum's class, or three from Mrs. McCollum's class and two from the Squares class. We're in the middle, towards the end. We thought it'd be finished by Thanksgiving, but this is all the great thinking that's going on, we're pushing it a little bit to mid-December. So they're still doing research and figuring out how they're going to present their information, but they are excited to share with you their driving questions and a little bit about what they've been researching and learning. So we have Leo, Libby, Sarah, Adam, and Liam, who are all just gonna share a little bit about what they're doing for this first Genius Hour project. Leo, you wanna go first?
I'm just gonna.
Sure. Do you mind? It's up to you. Do you mind?
My topic for Genius Hour is alternate gen, alternate energy sources to fossil fuels. My big question is whether we can stop using fossil fuels before it's too late. Some of the information I gathered during Genius Hour is that hydroelectricity, wind power, photovoltaic cells, also known as solar energy, are all clean sources of energy. Clean sources of energy are ones that don't pollute as much as, let's say, nuclear fusion. Nuclear fusion creates tons of hazardous waste every year, proving that it isn't a good option. I also found a solution that could work on cloudy, windless days. A hydrogen fuel cell converts oxygen and hydrogen into heat, water, and electricity.
So my topic is jellyfish and I have, the question is what types of jellyfish sting? Where are jellyfish that sting? And like what intensity do their sting, do their different stings have? So I interviewed a woman named Rachel Stein. She, she's in charge of the jellyfish at the Maritime Aquarium and she, she not only answered some of my questions, but she gave me lots of other interesting facts. Like I learned that every single jellyfish actually stings, like including moon jellyfish. They're just so weak that you can't feel it. And if it's a jellyfish, it's, if it stings, it's a jellyfish and if it doesn't, it's not. And so Mr. Crawford and I put together a documentary with some of the information from Rachel Stein.
Thank you.
So my drive, my powerful question is what are some human-created threats to Arctic and Antarctic seals and how can everyday people stop them? My topic is, oh, I was gonna get a source of your topic. My topic is Arctic and Antarctic seals. There are two Arctic species that are endangered, two populations of bearded seals and four populations of ringed seals. No Antarctic species have been declared endangered. One species is protected, Ross seals. The main things I learned are the things, are the threats to seals. Global warming threatens seals by melting the ice, the home of the seals. Pollution threatens them by tangling them and preventing them from swimming and sometimes choking them. Seal hunting used to be a major threat, but has been reduced and is only a minor threat to some seals.
My powerful question is how much it would cost to build the Great Pyramid of Giza today? I've been learning a lot about pyramids and how they are made, but I've also learned a lot about, I've also learned that projects aren't just a walk in a park and it's important to like take your time and find out information and confirm your project just to make sure it's good, I guess.
My project in Genius Hour is business attitude. I don't research in topics like how attitude affects the brain and people's decision to buy a product or service. For example, let's say I am trying to sell a product. The person I am selling it to has to trust me. After all, if something goes wrong with the product, they have to feel confident. I will stand behind it. Another important quality is warmth. If I am warm, people will feel like they can share their opinion with me and that I care about them. Confidence is also important. If you are confident in what you are saying, it is more believable to the person who, who you are talking to. Knowing a lot about the product you are selling is important, but it is not the most important thing. People think if you are smart in business and you understand business, you will be successful and make a lot of money. However, to be truly successful in business, you need to be confident, trustworthy, and you want. Customers will have to like you and feel confident about buying that product or service. I researched how, how, how attitude affects the brain in business. A customer thinks about the salesperson's attitude in their, oh, in their frontal world with their brain. The frontal world is the part of the brain where you make so many decisions, like what to eat or drink. The frontal world also controls expressions and feelings and it plays in a very important part in the business situation. Well, that is my project that I wanted to share. I did this because so many kids these days are not familiar with the attitude needed in business. So I want to tell kids when they're young, so if they get a job, interview or become a successful business person. Not just my idea, but the whole fifth grade has great ideas, new inventions and things that you never knew that would blow your mind. Kids even work on this on their own. This is great because you were running instead of playing on games on a hand and brain. I think this is for, amazing for kids and they could have an incredible future with Genius Hour.
So as you can see, just from the five students and we have 100, almost 120 fifth graders, every question is so different. What we found as teachers, we're learning as well, that guiding the question was one of the most difficult parts because they had so many great questions, so figuring out which one were they gonna do that they could really research for eight weeks. And as you can see, we came up with a variety, so we're excited to share in a couple of weeks the final products. Something else that's come about is too, so you heard Libby mention connection with technology and reaching community outreach. I was even able to help a student, because the questions are so varied, one of the students, their question was, because there's a document that I can, we can see all the questions, we've put it out to the faculty, if anybody has connections, "How do actors remember their lines?" That was a question. So I was able to connect them to a director of theater workshops so that, you know, they range and who can argue and who's not gonna trust, right? Right, Liam? Who's not gonna trust you standing up there and selling a product? But we even, you know, not in the classroom, as I go in there, I love to hear what they've learned or how they've changed their question from the beginning. That I think has been probably one of the most valuable pieces. And they start out with this big idea and to narrow it down to something that is tangible that they can learn and share, it's been pretty awesome.
Just on a quick note before we go into the capstone slide, is that one thing that was noticed by one of our teachers who works with students who are in TAG, is that these projects were almost identical to the kinds of projects that, that the TAG students were working on because there was a driving question, there was deep learning, there was engagement by the student because the student was working in an area that really was of high interest to them because it was, it was an area of choice. So we're, that's where I'm indicating, see the overlay of how we're starting to see the commonalities come together. But the difference here is that all students experiencing this opportunity for deeper learning in an area of choice, in an area where they're very engaged because it's an area of interest. So hats off to all of you. You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to wait for the rest of the presentation. Do you mind hearing the rest of the presentation we have? Is that okay? We have more to go. You'll enjoy it, I'm sure.
And thank you.
And thank you so much for sharing. That was really, really good of you guys. I appreciate that, because it takes a lot to come in and share with us. So like Mr. Gilbert said, you are welcome to stay, you and your parents, but you don't have to. We know that you guys have a lot going on and...
Choice, there's other choice.
...planned for your days off, and so, so you're welcome to stay and welcome to go.
So as I shared, we were in this position with Project Based Learning last year, so we were just kind of starting our planning. So I've met with the sixth grade team, they did go out to do a site visit. We are looking to do something similar again, and what we saw was kind of at the end of the year, and didn't get as much out of it as we would have liked. So that's looking forward to doing something like that. Also, thinking about a summer planning day, what we have right now is an ongoing document with ideas of what could, similar to what we did last year, what could a capstone project look like? And who do we need to be involved, and what would be involved? What the advantage is, is that these fifth graders are coming up with these research skills already as a solid foundation. And what it has taken as they are looking at materials and is this something that I would value as a piece of research? What makes me want to value this as a piece of research? So the students coming to sixth grade next year will have this as a foundation, as been planned for. They have a common project that kind of represents the work that they've done over the last six, seven years.
Okay, and Mrs. Kennedy will talk a little bit about our school-wide enrichment, and as we're moving forward in that area.
Well, we talked earlier in the spring about some of the visits we had done and visits that we had planned, to talk about some of the enrichment activities that we'd like to see happen here. And one of the things that's now in place, that third grade team has embraced this cluster, the cluster projects. And so they began, they did a little experiment in the spring, and then they began in October holding clusters in their, I think it was like Friday afternoon or Thursday afternoon. And students could opt, they had three choices, they could pick what they liked to go to. And they ran for, I think, four or five weeks, the first clusters. And the students had the option to talk about what they liked to do, what were some of the activities they could do. They were able to go on Google Docs and sign up for what they liked. And then they participated in these activities and shared some of them out. For instance, and the one on the right, that was John's class, and it was songwriting, and they wrote an original song, and they showed it or presented it to the whole fourth grade in hallway, and they sang it. So that was very exciting. Jackie's class on the top was an art class using seashells, so they had a lot of opportunities to paint or glue or put things together, sculptures. And then the bottom, I don't have, I can't see from this far, but I believe that's, could be the animation class. So we had, I think they had five different options last month, or last session. One of the things that we did do was visit the Grand V public schools, and we're going to be doing that again with the whole third grade team in January. They weren't able to accommodate us this winter, I mean, this fall, but we're going to go in January and visit them again, because not all the teachers got to go there. And to really look at how they progressed from when they originally started their clusters from probably pretty light, fluffier classes, to the more in-depth classes that we want to see happening. And the team, one of the other, as we go forward, that we're looking at is, how do we expand this? Do we roll it down to second grade? Do we roll it up to fourth grade? And that's something that we're working on this year to talk about. One of the things that there is a group working on in a professional learning community is talking about curriculum compacting. Is that fourth grade, Bob?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade. And then we're looking at the process of transitioning our tag identification from individual testing to a school-wide testing model, which most of the schools in the area do do. It's usually done, begins in third grade. It's very time-intensive for our psychologists to pull kids and do individualized testing for students when they're referred, where we can really get a better picture of our whole school-wide community. So that's something we're investigating further also. So we're going to look at expanding our clusters to other grade levels, follow up with Grand V. In December, we have a new group starting, and they're going to be doing, I think it's on that next page, but... Yeah, they're going to be doing arts like engineering, board games, dance, and cooking. And they're trying to make it fair, if you didn't get your first or second choice last time, you get your first choice this time. And we're expanding it to include other staff rather than just the third grade teachers. So our school psychologists are going to be doing an activity, both our school psychologists are going to be doing an activity, and I'm not sure if somebody from technology this time around is doing an activity or not. I know that we're trying to coordinate that. But we're trying to expand it so all of our specialists can get involved in this. We are going to be, again, looking at some changes, as Bob has said, to our tag program, and how do we incorporate all the new enrichment activities we're doing to include all children, so that, you know, a child can be working on one end with, say, an engineering project, and someone else may be doing an art project. So based on what their interests are, what their strengths are, what their giftedness is, or what their talent is, we can expand it through the cluster program. And we are going to be providing professional development for grade four on curriculum compacting. So I think that's pretty much it, what we're doing. The cluster's the one that has the most movement and going ahead, and the team is very excited, but I know second grade would really like to get involved in it, and we've talked about that possibly in the spring, adding them on. Anything else with that?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So the way the clusters work is you do a five-week program?
It varies, but that's what we've been doing, four to five weeks. And it's once a week, and it's usually for about an hour, and they switch classes within their grade level. The whole point eventually would be to switch grade levels. But, you know, it's just starting in one place, but I know in the Grand V, three to six program, they switch. There's no grade level in the activities. You can pick whatever activity you'd like to be in.
So they're doing another set of classes in December?
They're starting in December, yeah, through December through January, and then they'll do another one, probably in end of February, March.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, they've done a great job.
Yeah.
Any questions?
So the biggest, that second goal is really the medias part of the initiatives that we've got. We've got some other things, obviously, to talk to you about, and where we're moving, but that certainly is the medias. The third one, our third goal is all about professional learning for all faculty and staff. The idea that we brought professional learning community model into the school, or kind of reintroduced it and put everybody back on the same page in terms of what does that mean for teams working together, shared learning and all of that, and a differentiated professional learning plan. Gina will just hit the highlights of this for a moment or two.
So I'm privileged to be able to work with a great team. Our professional development and educator evaluation committee is made up of administrators and classroom teachers, and non-classroom teachers as well, so kind of our specialists. And they give up their time throughout the year to help plan for not only our big professional development days like we have in November and March, or in August, you know, prior to school starting, but also what our faculty meetings look like in making good use of our faculty meeting time for professional learning or work sessions for our teachers. A couple of things that we focused on, certainly, we are continuing our work on district initiatives. So we set ourselves out with this long-range plan for the year, and we try to map out, okay, we know we have some required trainings mandated, such as our ever-loving favorite bloodborne pathogens and food allergies, but also behavior de-escalation strategies. That is a mandate for us now. So we set those out. We also are mandated to do some training for, from DCF, so that's also a mandate. We map those out first, and then we look at, well, what are our district initiatives, such as project-based learning, curriculum compacting? When can we use the work on that? Not only throughout the year, but November, at our November Election Day PD, we had a chunk of our day devoted to district initiatives, so teams could get together. And this is also a time where they could go and seek out other members of the staff, because it's not during their PLC, professional learning community time during the day when other people are teaching. So that was, that was great. Also, in November, Mrs. Sherman and I presented another workshop, a math workshop. We are, we have a professional book club going, and we are reading, from reading to math workshop, taking all of what we know and do so well in reading workshop, and it translates it into math workshop language. So we did some work around that. This past summer, Mrs. Sherman and I attended, sponsored by Crec, a professional learning day around kind of bias. And so we are going to be sharing some of our knowledge and some things that we've also learned from our own readings with the faculty tomorrow, that will be part of our day tomorrow, to begin that conversation around implicit bias. Also, we continue to look at our progress report, so the report card and the standards, and also our rubrics that we have written to make sure that we are consistent as a grade-level team, and what are we looking at for a student to be a three, a two, a one at those standards? And we'll be spending a little bit of time, so we've got our day chunked tomorrow, doing that. Those are just the highlights. We also try to make sure that we provide for the individual kind, so making sure our art teachers are getting what they need, and our PE teachers, and our speech and language pathologists. So, you know, we do large things for the bulk of our staff, but we cannot forget about those folks as well. Dr. Karen Stevanger, we are planning for March, some work around NGSS, so there'll be some science work coming up. So we also look for feedback, and Google Forms are fantastic. So we have been using that after every session, and then looking at, the most recent from November was, we kind of took a little bit of a field trip. We had a very purposefully planned field trip, where staff spent about a half an hour touring the building on their own with people that they don't normally work with, and going in and out of classrooms, specifically looking how students can build independence during math time. Things they were looking for, they were looking for anchor charts, they were looking for access to manipulatives. They also got a whole host of other ideas when they came back. So when we were sharing that out, I have to say, the feedback was, you know, I'm up in this wing, I never get down to first grade, and I've got some great ideas, or vice versa. So that is one that is requested to be done again, with a plan in mind, to just be able to go out and look at how they've got their rooms set up, and then maybe go and say, talk to those folks. So that's something that, you know, we were thrilled that that's what came out of it. We set them with a specific goal, but as always, our teachers go much grander. And I think that kind of covers where we are on professional learning. And we continue our work with PLCs, just to strengthen our PLCs.
Thanks. Under goal four, which is really all about partnerships, diversity, community, and building that community, and really the area that we ventured off into at this point in time has been a very enriching committee that's made up of Board of Ed members, parents, staff, the community diversity committee, and we're really, we're sort of just on the maiden voyage at this point, but we've done a lot already, and Lisa will just share a little bit about, you know, what's going on and where we're going.
So one of the challenges of the work of this committee is that there are many things that are happening in the classroom or out in the larger school community that might be hard to capture very clearly. And that's part of the work that this committee is starting with. So we have had a few, a new community diversity committee was created, and as Bob just said, it is comprised of Board of Ed members and parents and faculty, staff, administration, and we have had already a few meetings. And the committee began by sort of talking about data around staff and student diversity, and sort of going back a few years to say, what has our student population looked like? What has our staff population looked like? And they started to ask some really great questions around sort of that information and around what's happening in the classroom and what's happening in the school community. And that's sort of where we are right now in terms of our conversation and our work, is trying to find a forum that we can sort of capture some of that information and talk about what is already happening. And it's actually funny, because after one of our meetings, I was in a second grade classroom, and the second grade teacher, who's actually a member of this committee, started talking about different Thanksgiving books that they were going to read, told from varying perspectives. And as I left, I said, that's so funny, because that's totally community diversity. And he was like, God, I didn't even think of that. Like, so there's so much that happens within the classroom naturally that's just sort of embedded within our curriculum that might be a little challenging for us to sort of capture and quantify in a way. But that's the conversation that we're having right now as a committee. We also are arranging for some teachers to attend some workshops. There are some really big workshops being offered around diverse books that I know our librarians are very interested in, and we've got some teachers interested in that as well. That's another sort of piece that happens very naturally in the classroom. So also, as you know, we have, school-wide, community-wide, we have been implementing CARES assemblies. Those started last year. Cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control, that's what CARES stands for. And the picture that you're looking at, actually, this year, we took a little bit of a different tactic with it, and what you are seeing is the entire school actually lined the hallways and practiced passing a ball from one student to another using their feet. And prior to this activity, the teachers in their classrooms had conversations about how this activity is going to sort of demonstrate all of the quality of CARES. It's going to demonstrate cooperating as you're passing that ball, being responsible, making sure the ball doesn't go flying into the air, or, you know, rolling down the hall, practicing self-control with our body, because we're all going to be sitting side by side. And it was just another opportunity for the whole school to sort of come together and do something as a community. Also, as I'm sure you know, we do have our kindness initiatives, and we have a Be Kindness Week that we celebrate every year. There's a lot of activities that happens around that with both students and the staff. And there's a lot of, again, school-wide grade-level events. For example, second grade does a money unit every year, and they have students collect the coins as a part of that unit. They count the coins as they come in, and then they choose as a grade level where to donate that money. They take a whole grade-level vote, and they donate that money. So that's just another grade-level example of something that's happening. Moving forward, the community diversity committee is going to sort of continue to identify activities that are happening in the building as best we can. And also, they're talking about creating a forum for sharing resources and information. So we're kind of in the process of working through what that might look like, and determining what sort of projects this committee wants to begin to work on, to bring out into the school and the students.
Lisa, don't go too far, because we're going to have you step up again, but this is a very exciting area and a very exciting committee, and there's so many aspects of diversity, you can look at it in a variety of ways, but one thing is, we want to make sure that we bring ourselves together as a community and recognize and value our differences and use those as an enriching part, which I think we do, but I think we can do even more so. So it's a very exciting committee. The fifth goal that we'll just end on is really about, all about maximizing efficiencies and taking a look at our systems and resources and what we have. And there's just two areas here that we'll be talking about tonight, is one is just a brief, you know, where are we with the SRBI model, which is really our intervention model, and also how we looked upon the whole idea of the aesthetics of our school and how do we enhance that in order to enhance student learning and enhance how students feel about the environment that they're in. So we'll go to SRBI first.
So our SRBI, we started by doing a site visit to Grand V with an identified group of teachers and specialists, curriculum leaders. And after that, we spent some time also, like, reading some articles, having some conversations. And after that, we really took a look at our own process and spent a lot of time revising our own SRBI process and sort of the documents and materials that we are using, and the way that we are tracking student data. So that all happened, all that work happened. And then at the start of this year, we had a professional development with our teachers, where we were able to sort of push out our new process, our new way of doing things. And the emphasis, aside from the sort of the collection and the paperwork piece of it, the emphasis is really on a data-driven conversation, looking at how a student is doing within the classroom, which is where all good instruction starts, and we know that. doing within the classroom, which is where all good instruction starts and we know that, and sort of looking at what's happening in the classroom. How is the teacher targeting that progress? Does the student need intervention? What will that goal look like within the intervention process and how are we going to sort of progress, keep track of and progress monitor how a student is doing? So, that's been a big shift for us. In addition to that work, we also created a schoolwide data collection form, which the staff members are now updating regularly with their own data. So, like, is this an opportunity to sort of look schoolwide, grade level by grade level, at multiple data points across a child's language arts and math learning? And we are able to sort of say, oh, hey, like this kid, we're noticing that this kid doesn't seem to be doing so great and let's talk about this kid and, oh, let's talk to the classroom teacher and how is that going? So, that data process has been really helping us to sort of move forward with our own thinking and process around intervention. Moving forward, some of our next steps, we are considering doing an additional site visit. We have another district that has invited us to come. And we also have gotten some SRBI plans and processes from two other districts that we are going to sort of look at and see if there's any changes that we want to make to our own process. And I will say that the group that does a lot of this work are our curriculum leaders, our math and language arts folks, and they are very thoughtful. They are constantly reflecting on how things are going. They're constantly meeting with teachers and talking to them about the process and how can we streamline it and how can we make it more effective and how can we make sure that we're doing the best that we can for the students that we're working with? So, they've been very engaged in this process in addition to the team that was identified to work on this. Any questions?
Our last initiative is beautification. We'll have a chance for questions on the entire plan at the very end, but just to kind of round it out, beautification is the other part of this fifth goal and Ms. Frisco will talk a little bit about that.
So, as you can see, we have taken multiple tours of the building with the wide variety of staff that we have as well as, you know, the representatives that we have on this committee. One of the most interesting things has been the discussion and the different perspectives, what one person is willing to live with, what little bit of clutter might drive somebody else kind of insane, what one person views as, you know, wow, we need to preserve all of this artwork this way. Well, what about the students coming in and how do we get their artwork up there and what are some ideas that we can do to preserve the artwork? Maybe photograph it and make it into one big collage, multiple pieces of artwork from particular years. So, there's been a lot of talk around how can we improve the environment we live in on very little to no budget. There. So, my nature to get that one in there. But I went on the tour with the students. So, we had a small group of student council members with their iPads photographing, talking, taking pictures, not with input from me. I kind of just said, go ahead and take a look. Here's what the adults did. Here's what, so we did the building tour one morning and, you know, they started to talk about what are the things that we can do as kids? So, they noticed the pencil lines. Like, if you've ever walked down the hall and they're headed to art and there's like these lines along the wall. So, they're like, oh, we do those, huh? Yep. So, that's one little tiny thing that they can fix. We don't have to do anything. You can fix that. You know, keep your hands off the walls, keep your, you know, utensils off the walls. So, that preserves not only the cleanliness, but it also preserves the artwork and the work that's been displayed. So, they took all their photographs and wrote all their notes and airdropped them all into a document for me to and the committee to review when we get together. Because now, what we need to do is really prioritize. What can we do first? We can't take it all on. What can we do? Can we break up into smaller groups and maybe tackle each some different things and make a plan for trying to improve upon the place in which we live for many, many hours a day?
And on the note of small or no budgets at all to do all that, interestingly enough, while there's a lot of bad news coming about budgets from the state, the state did release actually for just about every school district, small grants that we received one as well and something that, one of the major criteria is enhancing the school environment. Well, that just, it's perfect for this. So, we actually have a small, very small pot of gold to use to help with this area. Maybe it will be paint mostly, but nevertheless, it's in the net will help us to move along with this. So, that really is really a snapshot of the initiatives that are part of this plan and we certainly may have some questions about any of all of them. We'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you. That, I'm so glad to get the strategic update and I find that it's really useful as we try to partner with the administration, with you, Bob, to continuously improve. I guess in the interest of enhancing the school and continuously improving, it would be helpful, I think, sometimes thinking of ways where we can continue to have the discussions, not necessarily about current activities, but thinking about ways to really enhance or maybe thinking about lines of cohesion around current activities so that we can reach those goals a bit more succinctly and clearly would be useful. I guess pushing ourselves to understand what do we currently do? What can we, what can we do that's really sort of presenting the need to the board is helpful to me at least. Not necessarily just saying, oh, we already do a lot of this stuff, but what is a fundamental need? And I guess in some ways, the fundamental need that we got out of our board retreat in the summer, one related to diversity, is the lack of role models for our young people. The disproportionate percentage of those in the administration versus that are student body makeup. I consider that a real dire need and I think in the presentation of some of the things that we're going over and things like the strategic plan, those needs need to be made crystal clear so that we can collectively work together and partner to enhance and continuously improve. And how are we addressing those fundamental needs? And that's not an easy task and I think the report overall was fantastic, but I just think when we need to push ourselves to really partner, make sure that we understand when we walk out of these meetings, what the fundamental need is that we're trying to address. So, I'd just say thank you for the report, but also let's all, you know, continue to identify and crystallize those needs.
And I wanted to say, every time I listen to a description of what's going on and I hear Bob say, and this is in addition to everything we do every day, you know, with every student and teaching and everything else, and to listen to the enthusiasm in, you know, Gina's voice, in Lisa's voice, in everybody's voice when they're talking about these projects, it's impressive. It was great to have the kids here. That's fantastic. You know, I was worried we were going to have to like test various jellyfish and find out, you know, which ones hurt more. It was very, thank goodness we didn't do that. So, and then to hear about the, you know, the clusters and how those are going and, you know, we're repeating those things and what's happening, you know, that's all like real activity related to, you know, goals we already have and it's just November. So, that is fantastic because those are new for us this year and those are, you know, operational. We're done with one set of both and that's, you know, that's incredible. So, thank you. Let's see. The reaction that, you know, we started out with one idea in the, you know, the enrichment and then it turned out, you know, we had to back off a little bit because we found, you know, that things were changing and as we continually learn and then expand, you know, we're obviously just going to get better and better. So, thank you for that. And then the feedback on professional development, the idea that you're constantly saying, like, did this work? Did it not work? Like, what else do we need? You know, how did everybody, you know, react to it? That's fantastic at, you know, faculty meetings or full day professional development. You know, that's, that's the feedback that, you know, we've heard before, you know, from staff, you know, that, you know, like, you know, we want to, you know, have a huge part in, you know, what's decided and what we do. So, that was, that was.
I think the variety of activities and workshops and needs that are being met, Marsha can attest, the list is very long and I say, here, Marsha, can you make this fit and look nice on one page? But, you know, and that's really just come out of conversation and feedback, yes. But, you know, where are we going? But the long-range plan has been extremely, extremely helpful.
So, thank you. Thank you very much. Did anybody else have any questions?
I'll just make my comment, which is, I just want to say thanks. In all the years that we've talked on the board about things that we want to change, we haven't really added a lot and it seems like in the last few months, there's been a lot of changes and a lot of new things to the school. Thank you for that.
I think it's great. Thank you.
So, thank you for all the comments because that helps us to continue to move forward. And I don't want to predict the future, so, but I will just say that the intersection of a lot of these initiatives with some of the things that we're already doing and the commonalities and, you know, you don't need duplication and also the aspect of the reality of our budget and sometimes, you know, sometimes opportunities come out of what you have to do with your budget as you're, as you're getting to the end result of that. So, what am I saying is, there may be, don't go to the bank with it, but there may, there may be some, you know, some things that come out of our budget process because where we have to end up that these initiatives actually kind of rise to the top in terms of how we're evolving and how we're moving forward. And sometimes that's a painful, sometimes it's a painful process because it's a growing process because you're letting go of something and then taking something else on and there's a lot of, there's a lot of aspects of that, but just, so just be prepared as we kind of venture into some interesting waters.
I have a follow-up to that. Thank you. And this is really exciting to kind of see the long-term, three-year strategic plan. In terms of being able to figure out what comes out of the waters, is there any type of benchmarking or yearly plan to kind of prop up this broader three-year plan to make sure that we're, you know, meeting, meeting the longer-term goals at certain points or how does that planning process work?
So, I think actually, that's been brought up at one point earlier on and another board meeting along the way and I think we are getting to the point now where we have to kind of say, okay, so, it's almost like the project-based learning people where they started and they said, we're going to do the, we're going to do the census as the unit that's going to base that whole thing and then they kind of rethought it. So, I think at some point, we need to take some stock as to where we are. It may be the next time we report back to you on this or at some point where we say, okay, how are we going to shift the original priorities a little bit or what are we, what are we going to let go of? What are we going to really focus on? What's going to raise up a little higher? What's maybe done? So, I think there's a point in time where we will need to do that and I think that's a fair, it's a fair question and a fair, fair process for us to kind of bring forward. You know, where are we now and where are we going in year two? That kind of a thing. Yeah? So, I don't have the exact answer as to when and where and how, but it will, we will get there.
Great. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So, I think, oh, unless, do you have principals report? Do we need to do that?
Gina has a few things to share.
Some of it's already been covered in the strategic plan, but so, I want to just reiterate the Veterans Day ceremony and, you know, I was running around that morning being like, I can't believe we're not outside. I can't believe we're not outside until all of the children were seated on the floor and all of the veterans were on the side and they could see everybody and the band was in the front and the choir and my kindergartners and first graders were totally engaged. It didn't hurt that Officer Lynch was our guest speaker, so honestly, they were just like, but the feeling of community that was in that room that day, we haven't, we haven't felt that at a Veterans Day ceremony. It's been great. They've all been great, but this, all gathered in that room, it was awesome. So, you know, there was so much positive feedback and, you know, and.
I heard a lot of comments from people not in the school, you know, from, you know, people who attended and said, we've got to have everybody in that south gym again. And I was like, gosh, that's, you know.
Felt that. I turned away some parents. I had to, you know, so, we don't all fit.
No.
I mean, we had all of the people and there were people kind of spilled out into the hallways, you know, some of the parents who called that morning and said, look, you can come. You might be standing in the hall. The children and the guests are going to be seated and, but I think overall, it was totally, totally worth it and I would absolutely, that's the plan going forward. We will be inside. It will be there. And so, I just wanted to reiterate that. As well as some of the projects that happened throughout the day, you know, fifth grade reads the story of the white table and they have a whole thing that is acted out for that. And then that's set up for the rest of the day for children to go through. There were so many guests in the building, veterans. I think it was Ms. Franklin's class that had all but one branch of service represented. The cards and letters that I bring to the Veterans Hospital in West Haven. It just, it's just a great opportunity for students and for learning and for community. So, I won't talk anymore about it, but it is a great day. You've heard a little bit, I was going to talk a little bit about a professional development, but you've heard a little bit about that and our CARES assembly. I do want to say that our sixth graders have already started their, it's only November, but they've already started their transition process to middle school. They've already taken a trip over to Amity Middle School to see a part of the musical and so, they've had their first adventure and there are things throughout the year that helped that transition before we let them off into the big world. We've seen many faces. Many parents, grandparents, programs have already started. So, be it our first grade, what are we thankful for, our plays. We will have, December brings about a lot of performances and visits to the classroom. We've had Reader's Cafe where that happens to be fifth grade in some of our fifth grade classrooms where it's not the book club. That happens also. It's just adults, children, just reading. And it's, you know, for about a half an hour and it happens a few times throughout the year. So, I'm sure to see many more faces as we go through this busy season over the next few weeks. Safety drills, so we continue to have, you know, October was a pretty heavy month for us. We had three different ones, but we continue to have and revise and look at to make sure that we are doing the best that we can. We don't share out our safety plans for obvious reasons, but to do the best that we can to make sure we are keeping the safest environment possible. So, we keep a record of our monthly drills and make any notes, make any feedback and make any adjustments to those plans as we need to and we will continue to do that. We thank the police department, the fire department, they, obviously Officer Lynch. They communicate with us and they share information with us about what we could do better, if they answer our questions, if we're not sure. So, that will continue and the safety and security team meets every month. I think that is it. That wasn't covered. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, no. No more. All right. Thank you.
I was just scaring you.
Thank you. Don't scare that.
I just need to say that, going back to the initiatives that we're doing, there's a lot of staff time above and beyond. There's an extreme amount of administrative time. Gina, Lisa, Claire and Al is part of this as well, are all fully invested in this and it would not be able to happen unless there was people who are helping to guide, facilitate and it's work on top of what they do as well and a lot because, you know, the buck stops with the first one who's leading the group. So, anyway, so thank you to all four of them for what they've been doing, either in front or behind the scenes or whatever.
Okay. So, I think we're on committee reports and I unfortunately have to leave, so, he's going to run us through.
Great. John, facilities?
We met yesterday evening and essentially condensed our thoughts following last month's tour of the out exterior of the building and the ongoing efforts with complete, working on the Fussin' O'Neill projects as well as just ongoing maintenance issues with the building such as paving the north lot and so forth. And essentially congealed our thoughts into, we thought it would be very helpful to get members of the Board of Finance and Board of Selectment to go on a tour of the facility to see exactly what we're looking at in the hopes of maybe being able to find a little bit more budget money for addressing some of the more major issues. And that was it.
Great. And thank you, John, for your leadership on that. That's a great idea. So, that would be great. Moving on, I think we're going to bypass finance for now unless someone can sub in for Steve, but curriculum committee, Lynn?
Yeah. The curriculum committee met on November 9. We had a great presentation by, given by Ms. McDonald, Monique McDonald and Ms. Sherman and Ms. Frisco with an overview of the writers workshop model. And so, there was great discussion and I believe that presentation can be found. And so there was great discussion and I believe that presentation can be found in e-meeting for anyone who's interested in seeing it. It was very nicely done. Our next meeting will be December 7. And that's going to highlight the enrichment opportunities and course offerings within the extended day program and trying to see what, how that works for them and if they can take on any additional programming opportunities so that we can get an overview of that. And we'll also have a discussion at that meeting about the community lecture series that we've been talking about. January 4, we're going to be talking about responsive classroom. And we have our meeting scheduled through the end of the year, but haven't, I believe, addressed which meetings will cover topics such as tag and social studies.
Great. Thanks, Lynn.
Yep.
And backtracking to Steve for the finance committee meeting.
Sorry about that. You approved all of our reports already in the consent agenda. Other than that, the bulk of our discussion was really spent talking about the budget, which I think we're not going to, we're going to present at the next board meeting. So we'll come to you with sort of where the budget is at the next session.
An update from the policy committee. We present to you tonight two policies for your acceptance, policy 3280 and policy 7551. This is two policies that have been revised in response to inquiry last year for a named asset to be placed on school property. We have then subsequently divided them and revised two policies. One, for business and non-instruction operations, gifts, grants, requests and memorials. And then two, under construction, the naming of major facilities. And the word major is the only addition to that policy, but distinguishing it from policy 3280, which has more minor types of opportunities. Is there a motion to adopt these policies?
I'm hoping that we adopt policies 3280, gifts, grants, requests and memorials. And policy 7551, naming of major facilities as they were revised.
There a second? Okay. All those in favor? Those policies are then passed. And thank you to the policy committee who have all been working very diligently on some of these. We thought there wouldn't be much this year and we've actually hit a lot. So thanks to Bob and the team for that contribution.
Next?
Next, the ACES, there is no report. We were unable to attend the last meeting and we'll go directly to the CAPE report. Megan?
So as Bob mentioned earlier, we went to the CAPE CAPS convention. I guess I'll start with that. There were, I would definitely encourage folks next year, if you're able to, to attend it. There's a lot of really great programs. Actually had a hard time choosing what to go to since I couldn't be in three places at once. But just to give a little taste, for example, I went to personalized, personalizing learning and promoting student engagement through choice theory. Another one on Come Together Right Now, encouraging understanding and fostering culturally sensitive schools to avoid hate crimes and harassment. And then another one on legislative issues. Those are just some highlights. But it was, it was really a great experience all in all. I felt like I was refreshed on some knowledge that I felt was very interesting and then definitely learned some new stuff. One thing that we did happen, we did happen, that we did receive while we were there was, I know you all signed for it, but we received our award. Thanks to all of you. So the board leadership award for high standards, dedication and teamwork, Woodbridge Board of Education.
So 11 more years to go. We have the whole thing.
I was going to say, we have more to fill in.
Yes. So we have, you know, so and next year, so I guess I'll be on everybody to make sure we're doing our due diligence to earn our awards next year. But then if we want to, the year after, if we want to do the step up, we have to buckle down. You can do a few more things. So if folks want to look at it.
We're going to hang that next to the mission vision and rally.
We have a prominent place.
So a few trainings coming up. December 7 is a new board member orientation and leadership conference. So if folks are interested, that's in Rocky Hill. There's more information on that as well, if anyone's interested. December 11, the topic has changed, I guess. It's current legal issues now. The program will include issues of sexual identity, displaced students and social media. So if anyone's interested in that. Those are two trainings coming up. Everything else has already happened. Policy highlights. Interestingly, some of the highlights from this past month were impact of truancy on student achievement and chronic absenteeism, which we've already addressed. It's already stuff we've looked into and I think we've addressed it all. So another issue is there's a new policy issued for English learners. So I don't know if that's something we may want to look at and see. The Commission of Education indicated that the portion of ELS has reached an all-time high, nearly 7%. I'm not sure how it is in Woodbridge actually, but across the state in our schools.
I thought I heard that.
Right. Right, right. But it is increasing, ever increasing. So just the state's policies and practices concerning this population have changed to be in concert with Connecticut's, Connecticut's plan for the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so basically she also noted regarding accountability issues that when English, when EL students make progress towards English proficiency, they perform better in the academic subjects and become more engaged with the broader school community. So just trying to advocate for that too. So there's also a section on recent legislation impacts of nondiscrimination policies specifically affecting veterans, folks leaving of absence for National Guard members and whatnot. So not students per se, but I think this is more staff focused. So just to point that out, there's things we're going to look at in there. And I guess, let's see, American Education Week. We're talking about that, but maybe a little late. But there's some resources in there for perhaps next year. The CAPE journal. So interestingly, Connecticut school population is shrinking. We are not seeing that in Woodbridge though. So I don't know when that will affect us, but it's an interesting thing I thought that to note that in general, the populations in Connecticut are shrinking. There's more on that. High rankings for Connecticut school teachers, there's an article on that. Recent survey identified Connecticut as the fourth best state for teachers. That's a nice note. There's more information on that in there. State guidelines for educating expelled students. There are some lawsuits, I believe, and some issues with students not receiving the education that they deserve when they were expelled and whatnot. So there's some information on that. There's always a lot in here. What was the other one? One, oh, the student had mentioned about business mentality and positive thinking. And there's an article on titled Inspired Leadership and Ongoing Communication Are Crucial During Difficult Financial Times, talking about budget cuts and us having to make decisions. And one of the things was maintaining a positive mental attitude. So there's more in there as well. I thought that was a good reminder for things to come. So, and there's also an article on the board's role in curriculum decisions, which might be interesting for folks, those of us special in curriculum committee to read. So.
Thank you so much, Megan. And I can't underscore how valuable it is for you to report to us and connect the dots with us on the state level and really prioritizing, you know, what the state is focused on and the resources available. I think that's something that I have found very additive. The next meeting, we will cover the budget presentation. Any additional further public comment? I don't think so. There's no further public comment. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No.
A second? All those in favor? Okay, we're concluding then the meeting at 8:20, the earliest in the history of this. And does anyone feel the need for an executive session? If not, then we'll conclude the meeting altogether.